has fetal anomalies. They are told that is what they should do. Moms are even denied C-sections based on this fatal fetal anomaly label. These babies are viewed as a waste of medical resources and parents are told they will have no quality of life and it will ruin their lives. This discrimination begins with the belief that it is somehow merciful to allow these babies to be killed prenatally, but it doesn't stop after birth. It follows my son wherever he goes. And anytime we enter a hospital, we pray we have a doctor who would be willing to do everything to save him and look past this permanent label thrust upon my child. Trisomy 18 is often fatal because it is viewed as fatal. This impedes medical advancements needed to improve their outcomes. Facing losing a child is hard. I don't know how long Alex has on this planet. I can't predict the type of care he's going to require throughout his life, but you know what? I can't for my other kids either. Miscarriages, prematurity, car accidents, cancer. Nobody is guaranteed good health or a long life, and that's a natural burden of being human and we enter into it equally as parents, which is why this exception is different. The fatal fetal anomaly exception puts a lifelong burden on people like Alex and it hurts our access to healthcare. Please help us stop this discrimination right from the beginning by removing this abortion exception for them. Please keep my son safe.
My name is Katie Steert. I'm a Presbyterian pastor from Davenport and I'm speaking against this bill. I want to tell you my abortion story. I was 16 weeks pregnant with twins when I found out that one of them wasn't going to make it. She was missing several organs. Her heart was beating on the outside of her body. Her identical twin was entirely healthy, but at risk. The twins were connected through their umbilical cord. So the doctors in Iowa City let us know that if twin B's heartbeat stopped, the blood from twin A's body would likely rush into the outside, resulting in stroke or death. My doctors referred me to the Mayo Clinic. They proposed surgery to seal off the umbilical cord. This would separate the twins. It would protect twin A and stop twin B's heartbeat. It wasn't a hard choice for me or my husband. We knew it was the best thing to do to protect both the twins. I had my abortion at 20 weeks pregnant. It took a week of scans and tests and more tests. It was risky, like any other surgery. A few hours later, I developed complications and we lost both twins. I still wonder how things might have gone if we could have gotten an appointment sooner. I am so glad we had the healthcare we needed when we could get it. We moved to Iowa, planning to have a family, researching the hospitals, making sure they had a NICU nearby, a trauma center. In 2018, we had the healthcare and the doctors we needed to get us where we needed to be. Now, if this bill passes, we won't. I love being here. I love raising my girls here. I don't want them to have worse healthcare than I did. My story is just one story. Every pregnant person has their own story and they can be trusted to make their own choices. Abortion is part of healthcare. Protecting it protects Iowans. And it's part of my journey, being a happy part of a family here. Thank you for listening and please vote no on this bill.
My name is Rebecca Olson. I'm with the Family Leader. We're here today in support of HSB 255. I'm going to be reading a statement from Teresa Hayes from Davenport, who is unable to make it today. "I am not worthy of love, not by anyone, and certainly not by God. These are all things that I thought after I made the worst decision of my life. I wanted nothing more than to have children. Yet at 17 and unmarried, I found myself to be in this predicament. I knew what I had to do and swore I would take it to the grave and that nobody ever had to know. Not one doctor or nurse explained to me the side effects of what I was going to have done. I was days away from having a two-day abortion procedure, yet I was told that it was just a blob of tissue and I was not allowed to view the monitor as the ultrasound was being performed. I knew I was making a terrible verdict, but it was too late. The damage had already been done. My baby was ripped from my womb and a part of me died that day too. In January of 1999, I fell into a deep depression and wanted to die and felt I should not live any longer. No matter who told me they loved me or how much they loved me, I didn't believe it, nor did it matter. I was not worthy of life nor love. A little at a time, Jesus started to work on this part of my broken heart. I recall when I was a youth leader at my church and we were discussing abortion and we viewed a graphic video. I watched in horror the truth of what actually happened that spring day in 1988 and realized that my baby had had a heartbeat and she had fingerprints and she could feel. Little by little, Jesus kept chiseling away all the hurt spots to where I could accept His forgiveness, but I still was not able to forgive myself. It took years, but I am here today through this statement to tell you that I am 100% healed in His name. I implore you to vote for the heartbeat bill. Please, please, stand up for those babies and their mothers who cannot stand up for themselves, be their voice, and protect them. Thank you so much for taking the time to read my testimony of how abortion hurt me. Thank you."
My name is Rue Monroe. I'm from Davenport, Iowa, and I'm here today in opposition to this bill. At the age of 25, I lost my mother to a sudden stroke. She had been the one constant in my life, the person I could tell anything to, and in an instant, she was gone. Not even six months later, I was unexpectedly pregnant, living in a tiny, one-bedroom apartment in rural Iowa, working part-time and on Medicaid. At this time in my life, I was in indisputably poor situation financially, mentally, and emotionally. If there was ever a time I needed my mother, it was then, but instead, I received an abundance of care from my partner of less than a year. I was gifted with the compassion of a medical professional at Planned Parenthood. I was supported by all those who came before me and fought for their rights over their bodies to choose when, how, and if to be parents. Because I was able to obtain a safe and legal abortion, free from government overreach, now I have a chance at the ever-elusive American dream. I own a house with the same partner and pursuing a career path that makes an impact in my community and can prioritize my mental health and well-being. I made the best choice for me and my circumstances. I had an abortion, just as my mother once had an abortion, at a time when she had to travel all the way to New York for care. Every person who can become pregnant should have access to abortion care if that is what they decide is best for them, without any input aside from their personal doctor, in order to live their lives as best they are able. I urge you to protect the rights of Iowans who know what is in their own best interests and vote no."
Thank you to the committee and the chair. My name is Timothy Samuelson. I'm a medical student. I'm also the current president of the Christian Medical Association on my campus. Going to begin with a quote from Fay Waddleton, former president of Planned Parenthood, who said in 1997, "I think we have deluded ourselves into believing that people don't know that abortion is killing." The University of Chicago posted a survey several years ago, surveying over 5,000 biologists, most of whom were left-leaning or liberal in their political affiliation, and 96% of them agreed in consensus with the fact that life begins at conception. So with that said, you're going to hear today probably a lot of weaponization of empathy. You're going to hear emotionally charged arguments that somehow represent the majority of abortions, all wrapped in reproductive riots between a provider and the patient, all the while forgetting about the other patient who's inside the room and their right to life. I encourage you to look to the medical field, the central ethos that is to do no harm to the best of our ability, to protect life, to promote life, to prevent untimely death. I encourage you to welcome the bodily autonomy argument as a strong pro-life argument. We are in full support of females' rights to bodily autonomy, and that includes the females who are inside the womb. I encourage you to support this abolitionist movement for equal rights to life and not discriminate against someone based off of their appearance, based off of their size, their location, their level of development, or degree of dependency. I encourage you to become advocates, as everyone else has, to speak for those who do not yet have a voice for themselves. I encourage you to look back into history to those who were not afforded the same rights, the Jews of the Holocaust, the slaves who are in this nation. Look to that history, look to the outcomes and how horrendous they were. I encourage you as Iowans to be leaders in this fight for life. I encourage you to look to Scripture in Deuteronomy 4, when God gives the Israelites their law and it's righteous and just, and He says, "All the other nations will look to you and see you as wise and understanding." Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Francesca Turner. I'm a board-certified obstetrician-gynecologist and I'm here on behalf of Iowa American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology. First of all, this bill is fraught with medical inaccuracies. In medicine, we have very specific words that mean things. In this bill, you use the word fetus when you mean embryo. They have different definitions. Using medically inaccurate language is confusing and dangerous. The words in the bill should be very specific and accurate because words matter and facts are important. The words in the bill, when you talk about medical exceptions for the life of the mother, the bill is unclear. And I am going to ask every single one of you this question, and in your head, I want you to think of the answer. At what point, when your wife or your daughter or your sister is having a life, a medical emergency related to pregnancy, do I get to save her life? At what moment do I get to intervene? It's unclear in this bill. When you ask, when a woman has a medical emergency, you want your doctor to do everything possible to save her life. You don't want your doctor to stop and wonder if giving her life-saving medical care is going to break the law. The exceptions for rape and incest have a strict time period where the woman or child has to report the rape or incest. Making these arbitrary cutoffs is cruel and harmful. The confusing terminology is going to delay care, cause complications, and death of our patients. Pregnancy is too complicated to legislate. I support the rights of patients to choose medical care that is best for them and help them access care without government interference. I value the relationship between patients and providers, honoring each person to make their best healthcare decisions for their own medical, social, psychological, and spiritual well-being. I will leave you with the Iowa State motto. Our liberties we prize and our rights we will maintain, including women's rights. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Christy Judkins and I am Executive Director of I.R. Right to Life. Thank you for allowing me to speak in favor of the heartbeat bill. As I look around the room, I see we all have one thing in common, despite the point of view we each may have. We are all human beings. From the moment of conception, we were given a unique DNA which separates us outwardly and inwardly from the person standing or sitting next to us. In this very moment, we are still developing as we progress to old age. Despite how we were conceived, our hearts started beating at or before six weeks. My existence and reason for being is no less valuable or more important than any other person in this room. I understand both sides. I was a woman who exercised choice to have an abortion. This is why I advocate to prevent other women from experiencing what I have gone through. People have labeled me a hypocrite, but I ask you, who here would tell someone to make the same negative, permanent, life-changing mistake? I doubt you would want people to suffer the same consequence, but rather help them understand the truth. That is why I am here. Roe v. Wade was the law of the land in 1981. There was no healthcare from Planned Parenthood. I had no medical counsel or guidance to explain the risks of abortion, describe the stage of fetal development I was in, or let me hear the baby's heartbeat. Rather, it was cold, industrial, and an isolated experience. As years passed, I numbed the pain and trauma with drug use, fell deep into depression, and even decided that the only way to end my torment was to commit suicide. How could I not suffer trauma when a baby with a beating heart was suctioned out of me? In my faith walk, I've had to reconcile my past decision and receive God's mercy and forgiveness so I could move forward. Now, as Executive Director of I.R. Right to Life, I am called to articulate my position based on the science according to the April 30, 1965 edition of Life Magazine, which visualized fetal development.
Thank you.
A heartbeat law would have protected me and my unborn baby.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Good morning. I'm Sally Frank, Professor of Law at Drake and an active member of the Jewish community. The question of when human life begins is a religious and philosophical issue on which there is vast disagreement. The Iowa legislature should not be in the business of passing laws based on the religious beliefs of some Iowans while discounting those of others. Under Jewish law, human life begins at birth. While the fetus has value, its value is far below the value of the human lives of the living people, including those who are pregnant. The bill you are considering has exceptions that are too narrow. They do not allow abortions that Jewish law would permit or even at times require. The Reform Jewish Movement, the Union of Reform Judaism and its many affiliates, organizations, have supported reproductive justice and abortion rights since before Roe v. Wade. The bodily autonomy of women and good healthcare for all are principles that are important to us. Abortion is part of good healthcare and forced birth is not. Preserving health and life is so important in Judaism that most laws can be violated to protect human life and health. The concept is called pikuach nefesh. Banning abortions before people know they are pregnant and giving very limited exceptions violates the notion of pikuach nefesh and of Jewish law. The bill does not allow for abortions when there are serious psychological harms, people who might commit suicide, if not allowed to have an abortion. That's a clear one that would violate pikuach nefesh. I urge you to vote against this proposal and support the healthcare, reproductive rights, and autonomy of women.
Thank you. I am Shelley Pitts, a board member of I.R. Rights to Life and a representative of the Pro-Life Coalition. I'm reading a statement for Dr. Bill Lyle. My name is William Lyle. I'm a board-certified obstetrics and gynecology. I'm licensed to practice medicine in both Florida and Alabama. I completed my residency training in 1999 with the University of Florida and have delivered over 4,000 babies. We treat the preborn as patients. A patient is a person, no matter how small. We now routinely perform life-saving blood transfusions directly to babies in the womb as early as 18 weeks gestation. From the moment of conception, mothers and babies can have different blood types. Sometimes the mothers will possess antibodies against the baby's blood type. These antibodies can cross the placenta and attack the baby's blood and decrease the baby's blood count. Unless the baby is either delivered or receives a blood transfusion, the baby will die. A needle is guided by ultrasound, umbilical vein, and donated blood is placed into the baby's circulation. Babies' lives are saved. We are also performing surgery on babies in the womb. Two years ago, the Cleveland Clinic performed open-heart surgery on a baby at 27 weeks gestation to remove a tumor called teratoma from the heart. Before the heart surgery began, a pediatric anesthesiologist initiated an IV in the arm of the baby. The baby was given fentanyl for pain and Narcoen as a paralytic. A pediatric cardiothoracic surgeon then made an incision in the baby's chest and removed the cardiac tumor. The uterus was closed. Baby was delivered 10 weeks later. The baby is doing very well. Three weeks ago, vascular brain surgery was performed on a baby at Children's Hospital of Boston to correct life-threatening abnormality called Ghallan malformation.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Leah Vandenberg and I'm heartbroken to be here today. I started sharing my abortion story more than five years ago, shortly after receiving care here in Des Moines. Anti-choice politicians in Iowa have inflicted an unspeakable amount of pain and trauma into my life, invading my privacy and inserting themselves into my medical history. I'm tired of being a political pawn with my mental health and reproductive decisions up for speculation and debate. I was born and raised in Iowa and choosing to come back and live here in my adult life has been a dehumanizing experience. Abortion is normal, safe, life-saving healthcare. My personal story is what led me to work for the Iowa Abortion Access Fund, recognizing the life-changing impact of the organization. The fund provides financial assistance to Iowa and Quad Cities residents in need of care, believing that the freedom to choose abortion should be available to all individuals. We are the second-oldest abortion fund in the country, and despite what happens today, we won't be going anywhere. The majority of Iowans believe in the right to abortion access and they have been stepping up to help provide it. Our community will make sure that a ban does not stop people from receiving care. I am deeply opposed to passing HSB 255. All people should be trusted to make the reproductive healthcare decisions that are best for them. It's beyond time for Iowa legislators to recognize that autonomy over one's body is synonymous with freedom. Abortion is pivotal healthcare that needs to be accessible, recognized, and funded. We cannot be silenced. We will never give up and we will always take care of each other.
I am Jim Lamb. I'm a pastor serving with Lutheran Family Service. With the discussion of the heartbeat bill, there were many who wrongly had the idea that that's when life begins. But embryology textbooks used in medical schools are pretty consistent with statements like this. At the moment of syngemy, that's when the gametes come together, a new and unique human being comes into existence, a little girl or a little boy, unique, looking just like little boys and little girls look at that stage. So I want to remind everyone that we're not talking about something with a heartbeat. We're talking about someone with a heartbeat, someone who's autonomous, someone who is self-directed, someone not a part of the mom's body, but she has her own body, living in that wonderful place that mom provides. And I want to remind people of faith that the Bible has this wonderful imagery of God's hands being involved in the creation of life, knitting us together, shaping and forming us. That someone with a heartbeat is handmade by God. And those invisible hands became very visible in a womb. And they were nailed to a cross. This someone with a heartbeat that is handmade is also someone for whom Jesus died, and they deserve to live. And that someone with a heartbeat lives under the heartbeat of another someone who is also created by God. She is also someone that Jesus loves and someone He died for. She deserves better than the lie that the only way out of a difficult situation is the death of her little someone. She needs us to walk beside her with non-judgmental compassion, providing for her needs and helping her realize that regardless of the situation, death, death is never the solution to the problems of life.
Thank you.
I am the Reverend Bridgette Stevens. My pronouns are she and her. I'm an ordained minister in the United Church of Christ, and it is my Christian faith that compels me to speak in opposition to this legislation today. When life begins is a philosophical and religious question. The interpretation imposed by this legislation represents a narrow Christian view that is not appropriate criteria for public policy. God created all of humanity in all of its beautiful diversity, including our genders and sexuality, and called us all good. All Iowans deserve safe and accessible healthcare, including reproductive care and abortion care. And I speak in particular today on behalf of Black, Indigenous, people of color, and LGBTQ Iowans who will bear the brunt of this harmful legislation. Abortion will not go away. It will go underground. And let's be frank, straight, white men with money will still be able to get abortions for their wives, their daughters, and their girlfriends. And other people of color, Black, Indigenous folks, and LGBTQ Iowans will continue to die at exponentially higher rates than white Iowans. Mothers will die and babies will die. I believe in life abundant following Jesus Christ and I believe in abortion healthcare for all Iowans. The impact of this bill is unjust and immoral. Please vote no.
Good morning. My name is Melissa and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to share my story. It was the summer of 1969 and my mom was getting ready to begin her senior year. She loved the Beatles, the Supremes, and the Herman's Hermans. My mom had decided that she wanted to go to beauty school to be a cosmetologist. She also had a job at a local drugstore. The year had all the markings of your typical senior year of high school. The night I was conceived started out like any other night that many teenagers have experienced. My mom had a friend that wanted to go to a college party. The friend liked a guy she thought was a college basketball player and asked my mom to go to the party. My mom knew she should probably not sneak around and go, but she agreed to. And they made plans for after my mom got off work. Typically, my grandma, my grandpa would pick up my mom after she was finished working. It was not unusual for her to work late cleaning and restocking. So they decided my mom would just act like she had to work late. They would go to a party and then my mom would go back and have my grandpa pick her up. When they got to the party, they split up. Neither one of them knew anyone inside. They got drinks and started to mingle. It's very fuzzy for my mother after that. She knew something had happened because she was only partially dressed when she woke up. She had, she got dressed, walked back to the drugstore, and my grandpa came and picked her up. Senior year started out without my mom knowing that I was silently growing inside of her. She went back to school and over the next few weeks, as I grew so, to her suspicions that she was pregnant. She walked to school every day and vomited on the railroad tracks and an overwhelming tiredness set in. My grandma was not known for many, was known for many things, but being subtle was not one of them. She knew my mom was pregnant. My mom was four months along by that time and had started, I had started to move. So that solidified my grandma. My grandma told her that she was going to need to go to the doctor and get out and get checked. The remaining months were not easy on my mom and she had to leave school at Christmas, had to tell her friends, had to buy a crib, had to get ready to be an adult. To be honest, abortion was illegal in 1970 in Iowa, but my mom never considered that. And nine months later and 34 hours of labor, I made my debut. So I'm going to skip so that I can make sure I say this part, so that when she did, she took, so when she, she took me home and we started our life together. Now in the movies, that would be where the picture freezes and the caption on the screen would read, "Melissa went on to become a famous scientist and discovered the cure for cancer." But this is not true. I have led an ordinary but extraordinary life. I have the honor of being there when people I've loved have taken their last breath, when sweet babies have taken their first breath. I have been a daughter, a granddaughter, a sister, a Tia. I have mentored many children that some I will know what happened and some I will never know, but they've left an impression on my heart. I graduated high school. I graduated college. I've loved, I've lived, and I've had a wonderful life. Things like, things like, if you ask my mom, she would have no, things she had no idea about. She had no idea how to be a mom. She didn't know how she was going to graduate high school. She didn't know how she was going to support us and it scared her all, scared, she was scared of all of it. But she knew three things. She had a family that would support her. There was a reason that maybe she did not know at the time what the reason was, but God did, that I was born. And the final thing, and to her the most important, I deserved better than to be thrown in at the, at the end of the day with the trash. We talk a lot about choice, but I had no choice how I was conceived, if I was born, who I was born to. My choices began when my mom chose life for me. Now, as you vote, you have the option to choose life. I hope that my story has helped you and others that maybe don't believe the same way that I do, that whether a life is a one year or 100 years, it has meaning and that life was created for a purpose. Life is hard, that is for sure, but it is beautiful. I would like to thank you again for allowing me to speak about my life and also leave you with a Bible verse that has been my mantra and helped me in times of trouble. Jeremiah 29:11. "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and to not harm you, plans for a hope and a future." Thank you.
I'm Micah Doolin from Cedar Rapids. I'm here in opposition to this bill and to advocate for my life, the lives of other Iowans, and reproductive freedom. Abortion saved my life. I was once asked, "Why didn't you choose adoption?" To that, I answered, "I would have taken my own life if faced with the possibility of having to carry a child to term as an addict." Addiction isn't easy and can affect anyone. I wasn't raised to be an addict. I was raised in small-town Iowa where my parents instilled in me Christian values. Nonetheless, I became an addict. I spent time in psych wards, jail, and rehab. I wasn't stable enough to be pregnant. I chose abortion to save my life and my future. "Right to Life" is a slogan many here like to take as their own. So I ask you, what about my life? Would you have really had me kill myself rather than get an abortion? Would you have really wanted me to continue on with a pregnancy when I was drinking myself to death? If you knew me at that time in my life, you would understand that carrying a pregnancy would have been a horrible decision and that a baby, giving a baby up for an adoption would have killed me. At that point, it really isn't about a right to life. It's about putting something that could have been over something that is already here, me. I ask you today, what about my future? As an addict, people didn't think I had one, yet I stand here today, happy, healthy, and sober. The fact that I am standing here today means that my decision was the right one. I chose abortion and I am so grateful. I would be heartbroken if another Iowan did not have the same right as I did, to choose their life and their future. I believe this abortion ban would have a devastating impact on Iowan lives. I urge you to remember that lives, decisions, and stories are nuanced and that abortion isn't black and white. Please remember to vote in favor of our futures and our very real lives. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Adie with the Iowa Catholic Conference and grateful for the opportunity to give testimony and thankful that you're back in session today to deal with this really important issue. The Iowa Catholic Conference supports all human life from conception until natural death and we support the heartbeat bill and encourage you to pass it today. We approach this from a theological perspective, from a scientific... We approach this from a theological perspective, from a scientific perspective, and from a human rights perspective. In all of these, we come to the same conclusion. The unborn child is a distinct human life with her own value, with her own DNA, and with her own right to life and right to legal protections. As Pope Francis says, "Let us respect and love human life, especially vulnerable life in a mother's womb." As a state and as a society, we should commit ourselves to protect all vulnerable populations wherever we find them. Dr. Charles Camosi from Creighton Medical School says, "It's especially urgent to protect the dignity of those vulnerable populations when it may be radically inconvenient for those who have control over them." We must address the real and perceived inconveniences or challenges of bringing a new baby into the world. But we need to support women and meet their needs. We must do the hard work and address the economic structures that may make it difficult for a new mom to thrive in our culture. But of course, we need to celebrate new life and celebrate motherhood and families. However, the bottom line is no one can deny that this is a baby, and babies deserve to live. Thank you for considering this legislation and working to protect the most vulnerable population in our society, the unborn. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Connie Ryan. I'm the Executive Director of Interfaith Alliance of Iowa and Action Fund. The overwhelming majority of Iowans, people of faith and all beliefs, support reproductive rights, including access to safe and legal abortion. There's a lot of rhetoric around the issue of abortion, invoking God's will and generic statements about people of faith as if we are monolithic in our beliefs. Quite simply, that narrative is false. Any humble person of faith would never proclaim to fully know or understand God's will. And to be clear, many Iowans of faith believe in reproductive freedom because of their faith. 1,215 Iowans signed the Iowans for Reproductive Freedom Statement from the Interfaith Alliance of Iowa. The statement says in part, "As people of faith and all beliefs, we raise our voices in support of the right of Iowans to make their own decisions regarding their reproductive health care, including the right to safe and legal abortion without the infringement of government or religion." 61% of Iowans in communities, big and small, urban and rural, 61% of Iowans Republicans, Democrats, and independents support safe and legal abortion. The pressure to ban or hinder access to abortion comes from one fragment of one religion. In a strong democracy where separation of government and religion protects both, one religious belief should never be elevated above others or inserted into public policy. Iowa is not a theocracy, and our laws must reflect that understanding. Every Iowan has the right to their own personal religious beliefs. It is a right we hold sacred and protect universally. Personal religious beliefs must never be misused to infringe on the rights of others. We urge you to protect the fundamental reproductive rights of Iowans, including access to safe and legal abortion. Vote no on the legislation before you today. Thank you so much.
My name is Grace, and I'm here to share with you my experience and why I feel is important to enact life-protecting legislation here in the state of Iowa today. I used to be pro-choice. I used to believe that abortion is a women's rights issue and that I must defend women and our rights. But then, when I was faced with some facts, I realized what an abortion really is, and I became pro-life. Growing up, I was never properly informed. I had never seen a fetal ultrasound picture, and I was never told that a baby has their first heartbeat at 21 to 24 days. All I was told was that women need this and that the government is taking it away. Since then, I've seen the reality of abortion and that this is a humans' rights issue. And as Governor Reynolds perfectly said, abortion is the destruction of an innocent, defenseless life. And this is what the pro-choice movement and the current laws in the state of Iowa are failing to see today. When I was pro-choice, I was a freshman in college. I believed in what the abortion lobby capitalizes on. And this is yes, that abortion does affect women more than men. But again, what is often not said is that when a woman goes in to have an abortion, it is stopping the beating heart of an innocent human life and often breaking the heart of the mother. And we are still allowing this to happen here today. And we have many young women, like my younger self, convinced that abortion is needed or necessary. We framed abortion as the removal of just a clump of cells, and many women have been told that they'll be better off or more successful if they have one. But the truth is, is that these are all incredibly dangerous lies, lies that I once believed. Our children are precious, and women are strong. These babies have heartbeats, their own unique DNA, and they deserve to live. Right now, we conveniently have abortion facilities located right by all the largest colleges in Iowa. And this is where many girls my age will go to have an abortion. And as a college student myself and a post-Roe America, I say enough is enough. We need to stop this in Iowa. Instead of this violence, we can provide women with real support and provide our children and women with resources, which many people are so eager to, to provide. Please consider what is right for both women and their babies when making these important decisions. Thank you.
My name is Tracy Jones. I'm from Davenport, Iowa. And I'm here today to represent my mother, who died 51 years ago this week. She died when I was 15 months old and my siblings were eight and 11. It was in 1972 when our newly divorced mom became pregnant. I can imagine the fear and guilt that must have washed over her. Our mom was raised in a conservative religious household. I'm certain abortion was not the first thing that sprang to her mind, but she had suffered severe preeclampsia with every pregnancy. She realized she would need an abortion. The closest state to get a legal abortion was New York. She saved what money she could while also providing for us. When she was finally able to save enough money and travel, she was too far along, and the clinic turned her away. She was in an impossible situation, which would have no good ending. Her health declined rapidly. She spent her last Fourth of July eating ice cream and watching fireworks and wondering what would happen to her children as she watched them under the colorful sky. Eight days later, she said tearful goodbyes as she left for the hospital. Several hours later, she died from eclampsia. My brother Greg shared our mom's story two months ago on the House floor in Springfield, Illinois as a newly elected representative. I shared his speech on TikTok. One of the comments mentioned that our mother shouldn't have gotten pregnant, as if a death sentence is an appropriate punishment for an unplanned pregnancy. What a very cruel thing to say to her children. Her absence has haunted me. I wonder if she would like the child I was and the person I am and continue to become. I don't know my mother's voice, her laugh, what she wanted for her future or mine. I have many what-if feelings, but all the what-ifs don't change what-is. My mom died because she wasn't allowed to make her own health care decisions. The overturning of Roe has created a situation where this is happening again. It hurts to know there will be more children with a story like ours. Medical decisions are between a woman and her doctor, not a lawmaker and a constituent. Abortion is necessary health care, and women need to have unapologetic access. I'm asking you to vote no on this legislation that will only provide a backdrop for future tragedies.
Good morning, elected members of Congress, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. You have a big job ahead of you. I'm a board-certified family practitioner. I've been providing complete medical care with obstetrics, including C-sections, in a rural setting for about 22 years. And I'm now providing most of the same care in the greater Des Moines area, and I've done so for 12 years. And as of last Saturday, I managed the delivery of my 2,501st newborn child. We are here because of life. All of us are alive. But sadly, we have inherited a culture, a plague, that somehow is indoctrinating us into killing in, in the womb. And that's okay. But you members of Congress can stop this plague on the side of life. So let me just briefly add one of the, some discussion about one of the arguments, the opposition to life. Time and time again harp on, as far as this, the argument doesn't make sense to me. Specifically, the tubal pregnancy. By the way, not all ectopic pregnancies outside of the tube present the same danger to a mother depending on location. This tubal baby is a heart, has a heartbeat. If allowed to continue, it will grow in the mother's tube, rupture in a location of extremely plentiful blood supply, and the mother will rapidly bleed to death. A situation in which we have no means to save the baby as yet and can only save the mother's life, and, and the conditions in this bill provide that. The issue in this case with the tubal pregnancy, ladies and gentlemen, is not the beating of a heart of a tubal baby, however profound its existence. It is inappropriate and untenable location and its unavoidable danger to the mother. I urge you to support this bill and the valuable lives that it will save. And please avoid falling for bait and switch arguments such as this. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Therese Grant, and I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Iowa. Thank you for hosting this hearing for an opportunity to express our opinion on House Study Bill 255. We are opposed to the bill because we strongly believe that it's a personal choice for individuals to determine their reproductive rights. We know that the majority of Iowans do support reproductive freedom and that this has been shown by various polls taken by the Des Moines Register. The League of Women Voters of Iowa believes that every person should have access to affordable, quality health care, including birth control and the privacy to make reproductive choices. As an ally of reproductive rights organizations, we know that safe access to health care, including abortions, is essential to our democracy and to one's individual freedom. True democracy depends on equal rights for all people. Losing our right to reproductive choice opens the door to the loss of other freedoms, such as marriage equality and contraception. Abortion should be legal, safe, and the choice of pregnant people who live here in Iowa. The League of Women Voters stands in solidarity with women and individuals who may become pregnant and in their fight to protect reproductive freedom. We ask that you protect the personal choice of individuals to determine their reproductive rights, and we ask that you oppose House Study Bill 255. Thank you.
Pastor Teri Amen, Church of the Wade, Des Moines, Iowa. And for seven years, for seven years, I stood outside Planned Parenthood in Urbandale on Thursday afternoon for one hour. For seven years, I rarely missed a day. You never heard about it because there was never any violence. It was just prayer. And one day, a lady came running up the hill and said, "Well, children, if we, if we don't have abortion, then, then the children, they, we have women. They can't afford to raise the children. They're gonna have a terrible life." And so I said to that, that woman, I said, "Let me ask you a question. Where's the stock market gonna close tomorrow? What's the high, the low, and the last for the stock market tomorrow?" She said, "Well, I don't know." "So you can't tell me what the stock market's gonna do tomorrow, but you can, you can predict this, this child's life?" The second thing I, I asked her, I said, "What is your influence in your life? About how many people do you have an influence with? Maybe 20?" She said, "Yeah, 20 people." And you've made an impact in their life. She said, "Yeah." And I said, "What would happen if your life didn't exist? What, what about those, what about those other people?" And finally, I'll just leave you as a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. Everyone in this room is gonna stand before a holy God and give an account. And woe to the one who says, "I arbitrarily chose death, and I urge you to choose life." Thank you.
Hi, and we have the opportunity, this special session, to, Stacy Freeland, I'm with the American Heart Association. We're neutral, neutral on this legislation, but we have the opportunity to extend postpartum coverage to one year, this special session, and we really would like you to consider that. We are one of five states that has not done that. And there's a growing amount of evidence on how we can do, prevent a lot of disease and long-term illness that happens after someone has a baby. Heart disease and stroke, it's the number one killer of moms. And we know that this is an opportunity that we could do some real help a lot of moms right now. And I don't think we have the, the chance to wait to not do this right now in this special session. So we really hope you can look at this and try to include this. We have other states that are taking action in the coming months. So please use this opportunity, this special session, to help a lot of moms, a lot of babies. And we, it would mirror that same coverage that we have for babies right now in the first time of life. So please use this opportunity and help a lot of Iowan moms right now. Thank you.
Dr. Katie Copus, pediatric pregnancy chiropractor. When you look at a child, what I see is potential. And that is how God looks at every child here on earth, is the potential and the rejoicing that He places over them. I speak to you not as a romantic doctor, but as a woman who made a wrong choice. And I can tell you from these post-aborted women of the pain and the trauma that occurs after making a wrong choice. From my standpoint of education, 20 days post-conception is when the nervous system comes online in utero. And in my medical experience, if you have a nervous system, you can feel pain. Do you imagine the pain that is being caused to that child? Now imagine the pain that is being caused to that mother, knowing that she has lost the potential to hold life. She has lost the potential to be at her child's graduation, and she has lost potential of future generations. I urge you to think of those mothers and those children, and also just to see the potential in every human being.
My name is Marty Anderson, and I oppose this bill. Discussion about abortion generally focuses on policy. Who can get it and under what circumstances? There's little attention given to the 1.3 million women who have an abortion every year and their personal reasons for that decision. The stories I want to share today come from my family. They are stories of choice. Choice to carry a pregnancy for nine months to birth, a choice to keep and raise a baby, a choice to release a baby for adoption, or a choice to have an abortion. My mother was one of four daughters. She was also an incest survivor. While suffering the betrayal of incest by her father, she believed that she was protecting her sisters, but then her 12-year-old baby sister got pregnant. The family story was that she was raped in an asparagus field where St. Teresa's Church now stands in Des Moines. But my mom and aunt knew the baby that she carried for nine months and gave birth to was her father's by incest. At 13, my aunt gave up her baby for adoption. My parents were strong Catholics who used the rhythm method. The result was nine pregnancies in 11 years, with five children born from the nine pregnancies. Mom's Catholic physician told her the ninth pregnancy would kill her, the baby, or both of them, and recommended an abortion. Mom's faith compelled her to carry the child. She and my Catholic father fought heatedly. He did not want to lose her or raise five children without their mom. Mom decided to have the abortion and never spoke of it again. I had a daughter with my first love when I was 19.
Thank you.
That's it? Are you kidding me? Again, I, I just can't talk fast enough.
Hello, everyone. My name is Augustine Payne, and I'm the Executive Director of Dubuque County Right to Life. We, we have over 600 paid members in our organization and a mailing list of over 3,000 people. We're a nonprofit headquartered in Dubuque, and we're dedicated to educating the public on euthanasia, abortion, and infanticide. When my wife and I found out that we were pregnant, the science told us that she was pregnant with a whole, distinct, living human being. Max is the same living human being now at age two as when he was conceived, as when his heart started beating, and as when we had our first prenatal appointment at eight weeks. All that he needed since he was conceived was proper environment and adequate nutrition, both of which he still needs today. The Heartbeat Bill you are considering today is about granting equality that you and I enjoy to the preborn boys and girls whose heartbeat can be detected. What is it that grants us that equality? It is our shared human nature. It is our shared human nature, because that is what we all share equally in this very diverse society. Passing the heartbeat bill today will at least guarantee babies who have a detectable heartbeat receive protection under the law. Such protection should begin at conception, when they begin to share in our human nature. But to do anything other than pass this heartbeat bill today would condemn thousands of preborn Iowa boys and girls to the slaughter and do their mothers a grave injustice by ignoring the humanity of the preborn and the many positive pro-life answers to unintended pregnancies. Without the right to life, not one, not one single right we hold dear would exist. I ask you today to increase protection for the preborn humans so that babies can be saved and mothers can be protected from the horrors of abortion. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I thought I was projecting loud enough. My name is Polly Dennison, and I'm from Van Horn, Iowa. I am a pro-choice Catholic. Yes, we exist. Decades of polling tell us the solid majority of Catholics believe that abortion should be legal in the United States, and six in 10 Catholics believe that abortion should be, or can be, a moral choice. Catholics in Iowa agree. I am here to say that Catholics can, in good conscience, support access to abortion and to affirm that abortion can be a moral choice. I am here as one of the majority of Catholics in Iowa and across the country who stand with Catholics for choice. I come to represent those voices and to speak in opposition to this bill. Our church has taught us that we are obligated to follow our conscience, to make moral and ethical decisions based on our own judgment. I will repeat that. Our church has taught us to make moral and ethical choices based on our judgment. The catechism teaches us that a human being must always obey the certain judgment of his or her conscience. It is a gift and a responsibility that we are called to always follow our conscience and to respect the right of others to do the same. Again, we are called to respect the right of others to do the same. I hope that you appreciate the breadth of the Catholic opinion on this issue. Don't be deceived by the Iowa Catholic Conference and their conservative allies and the anti-choice interest groups who claim to speak for all Iowans. Be assured, Catholics like me support access to the full range of reproductive health services. I urge you to reject this bill as a sign of your commitment to the moral autonomy of Iowans like me. It is the right thing to do. Thank you for this opportunity.
My name is Margaret Harris. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of HSB 255. I give thanks to God that we have come this far. I want to say thank you to all of the lawmakers and support people and to our governor, Ken Reynolds, who have made this possible. I'm a mother and a grandmother. I'm also a volunteer counselor at a crisis pregnancy center. I started in the Cedar Rapids area in the 90s and have, in the past six years, have been working in Newton. I say yes to this bill for the moms that I talk to. I say yes for the teenager who wept over her abortion. Yes for the teenager who kept her baby, saying, "I want him to know that I'm his mom." I say yes to this bill for all the moms who keep their babies in spite of uncertain support systems, who want their kids to have more secure lives than they did. They are vulnerable to abortion. They are victims as much as the babies. I say yes for the 20-year-old mother who said no to abortion, even when her baby had serious birth defects. He is a beautiful child, doing well. His mom and dad are our heroes. I love these women, so many of them by now, surprisingly tenacious and heartbreakingly fragile. When I was a freshman in college, long ago, pre-Roe versus Wade, I was waiting for a friend to finish up her lab work in the science building. I stepped into the empty biology lab to look around and saw nine jars lined up on the table. It was stunning. Nine babies in nine jars in nine stages of gestation. Nine babies that somebody wanted and missed. It was totally clear that a baby is a baby from the very beginning. This is not guesswork. So I say yes to this bill for the babies. All those babies our nation has thrown away, they're all precious. Thank you.
My name is Hillary McAdoo. First and foremost, I am a mother of two daughters. My biggest motivation for being here. Beyond that, I am a nurse, one that has been in women's health for the past seven years. My current position is as a fertility nurse here in West Des Moines. I spend every day caring for, mentoring, counseling, educating, and consoling women that all have the common goal of becoming a mother. I get to call women on the best and worst days of their lives. They hang on my words, waiting for me to tell them, "You're pregnant." But it's not lost on me that these are not always welcomed words. I love what I do, but the weight of being a mother is a heavy one, emotionally, financially, and mentally tolling. The people before me want to govern women's bodies without understanding how they work. I've heard multiple times this morning discussing hearing a heartbeat at six weeks. This is completely false and a dangerous claim. The American Congress of Obstetrics and Gynecology does not recommend the use of transducers to audibly hear a heartbeat until 14 weeks. Majority of the time, though, this is done at 10. We say until six weeks, you may obtain an abortion in the state of Iowa. Understand that at the time of conception, a person is already two weeks gestation. You may not get a positive home test until you are four to five weeks gestation. That means that you're giving these women one week, one week, to be able to obtain a safe procedure in the state of Iowa, where 89% of the counties do not have access to an abortion clinic. The fact is, this timeline is impossible and irresponsible. There are exceptions in place for the instances of rape and incest, but what will this process look like for these individuals? Further trauma and unnecessary intervention from other parties for these victims? Just because a person has the ability to become pregnant does not mean that they should be forced to become a mother. The majority of Iowa has already spoken that they support women's reproductive freedom. Stop refusing to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Hurley with the Family Leader. Thank you for bringing this bill. I'm going to keep it short and simple today. I am here because of a picture that I saw when I was 21 years old of an aborted child. It was obvious to me, just like when you see a picture from Auschwitz, that the unborn children are human beings. This child in this picture is 18 weeks gestation. This child right here can be legally killed right now, today, in Iowa at 18 weeks. This little girl has her own blood type, her own DNA, her own heartbeat. She's a baby. She deserves to live. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Stevenson, a retired professor and director of a program for single parents and single pregnant women. This legislature has passed bills which purport to support parental rights. You want to talk about rights? I want to talk about women's rights. The majority of Iowans, including those who identify as Christian, support a woman's right to what happens to her body. I'm not telling anyone in this hearing what you don't already know, that over 60% of all Iowans, including Christians, support reproductive rights, including abortion. I wonder how many of the women in this room, or listening to this hearing, or the men whose partners knew they were pregnant at six weeks gestational age? Especially if you're not planning on becoming pregnant, which I taught developmental psychology at the college level for over 20 years. I'm here to tell you that over half of all pregnancies are unplanned, whether you're married, financially stable, or not. My personal experience was having an unplanned pregnancy and not realizing it until I was about eight weeks, and at that point, things were already going poorly in the pregnancy. My husband and I were in transition between college and careers. The only time I saw a doctor was to have the pregnancy confirmed, even though it was not going well, because I wasn't in a position to have regular medical care. I honestly don't know what our decision would have been if that pregnancy had not self-terminated in a spontaneous abortion, and I'm not here to judge anyone for their view. I'm just here to say, though, I required a DNC about a year later by a doctor who hadn't monitored my pregnancy. I wonder...
My name is Angela Winell, and I am here in favor of this bill. According to Iowa Code 707, if a woman is assaulted and it leads to the death of her unborn child, her perpetrator has committed a felony. But if that same woman chooses to end the life of her unborn child with the help of her doctor, this is perfectly legal. The only way we can reconcile these contradictory statutes in Iowa code is to assume the principles of might makes right, the idea that whoever holds the power over another holds the right to determine their fate. Might makes right is the underlying assumption for every atrocity committed in human history, including the institution of American slavery. Abortion is no exception. This contradiction in Iowa code is in direct conflict with the principles expressed in our founding documents, that we are endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights, and among those are the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is not a coincidence that the right to life is listed first before all others, for without the right to life, the rest have no meaning. The value of every human being is not determined by whether or not we are wanted, but because we are created beings made in the image of God with inherent value and worth. This issue is near and dear to my heart, as I was once a teenage mother, terrified of what the future held. But choosing life gave others the opportunity to surround me with love, grace, and mercy. And now my daughter is one of my greatest blessings. Through these trials, I learned an important lesson, that the most meaningful things in life require self-sacrifice. Setting aside your own needs for the sake of others is the highest virtue, and also results in the greatest rewards. Every child, no matter the circumstance, deserves the protections guaranteed to every American. Every child deserves the right to life. My only issue with this bill is it does not protect life from conception. Please reconcile the contradiction in Iowa code and bring it in line with the principles of American liberty. Thank you.
I'm just going to make a quick announcement here. When you come in to speak, we'll wait to speak until the doors are closed so that we give everybody a fair chance that we can hear who's coming into the room, so...
My name is Katie Hansen. I am speaking against this bill. By all accounts, I should be the poster child for the pro-life cause. I was adopted. My birth mother, my biological mother, she had an unplanned pregnancy. She did not know she was pregnant until the end of her third trimester. And the reason I am against this bill and for women's health care and for abortion as health care is because I know that adoption is not the answer. I know that forcing people to birth humans is not the answer. You all say that you want... This governor says that she wants to protect life. Well, she is not funding education. She is letting our drinking water become contaminated. She is letting the air we breathe become contaminated. These are things that living, breathing, the breath of life, breathing Iowans are going through, have issues with day to day. We are not in a special session for any of those things. Instead, we're in a special session so that she may score political points to perhaps become a vice president. And it is shameful that the majority and this governor has decided to step on our liberties and rescind our rights, when as Iowans, we will value our liberties and protect our rights. I had an abortion, and every day after I had that abortion, I was glad, ever more glad and thankful that I was able to get that. It was a good thing for me, and I hope that every person who is in that position is able to also be grateful that they have the option to have that if that situation comes up for them. My only regret is that my birth mother may not have felt the ability or the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Mike Coverdale. I'm from Nevada, Iowa. I'm happy to be here on this beautiful sunny day. Maybe not that happy. But I was in the other room, and I was listening to all the testimony prior to me sitting down. It was all emotional, both sides of this issue. But I'm here in opposition to this bill. And I know the votes are counted. I know what I say, or any of us say, coming in here, will really not influence what you pull tonight. But I'm here to say that what you do in the dark of night is not right. And I'm talking to the majority party right now. You're good people. You're my neighbors. I like you, but I don't like this policy because it hurts people. And when you do it at the dead of night, it's not very cool. So just know that I hope that each of you find a quiet spot sometime, so the ringing in your ears kind of just dissipates. And have a good day. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Samantha Fett, and I am a mother of two, and I want to thank the governor. I want to thank the governor and the legislators for bringing this bill forward during a special session. For the previous heartbeat bill, three court members applied an undue burden standard instead of a rational basis standard. Law changes may be needed to legislatively codify into law this standard to prevent another judicial ruling that is similar, that upsets our democracy. In addition, I don't believe this bill goes far enough. See, I believe life begins at conception, a true blessing made in the image of God. The biggest lie told is that abortion is women's health care. Our modern technology leaves no room for doubts that an unborn child is life. No one has the autonomy to harm the body of another regardless of the circumstance. The right to life is the most basic right, listed first in America's founding documents, because without life, the rest has no meaning. So yes, the topic of abortion includes politics and religion, because they are the drivers in our society to what is right and wrong. It's time to end abortion that takes the life of the innocent and leaves a hidden scar on the hearts of the women that carry the burden of the procedure. That's not health care. We need to love them both, and I want to change that narrative. See, I was encouraged as a young mother to get an abortion simply because I was young, and I was ashamed for having a baby. That's wrong. There's no more important calling on this earth than to have children. It's the fundamental part of our society that is true and beautiful. Like so many Iowans, I believe life is precious and valuable. Thank you to those that stand for truth. Life is at conception. Thank you.
Iowa faces a bleak situation as it relates to maternal health care, having recently seen a rapid increase in maternal death. Speaking as a student planning a career in obstetrics and gynecology, I know that further restricting abortion here would only make this problem worse. In fact, states with restrictive abortion laws have already seen a decrease in applications for OB-GYN physician resident programs compared with their less restrictive counterparts. Iowa is already seeing a steady decline in the ratio of delivering OB-GYNs to women of reproductive age, and enacting measures that drive providers away will certainly not help this situation. Furthermore, multiple studies have shown a correlation between restrictive abortion policy and higher rates of maternal death. I also cannot leave this space without addressing the sanctity of the provider-patient relationship. In my experience working with OB-GYN patients, including abortion patients, I bore witness to some of the most private, personal moments of people's lives, and I carry them with me every day.
Patients wailing with grief for the pregnancy they had wanted and loved. Patients who tried so hard to conceive with help from modern technology, only to receive devastating news at their ultrasound. Patients who made every effort to continue a high-risk pregnancy at a later gestational age, but ultimately could not do so. All of these patients made their highly personal decisions with the help of their physician and without the input of their government. It is the job of the physician who trained for years to use their hard-earned expertise to work together with their patients to help them make medical decisions of all kinds. They cannot do this job with the government interfering. Regardless of one's personal beliefs about abortion, it is vital to recognize that restricting abortion access leads to poorer health outcomes and compromises the doctor-patient relationship. For these reasons, restricting abortion in our state would be a deep disservice to all Iowans.
Honorable legislators, it is a privilege to address you today on this issue. I'm Doug Campbell, registered pharmacist from Mason City, Iowa. In addition to regular curriculum, I have studied human embryology, human genetics, neurophysiology, histology, and endocrinology. I have studied human sexuality and reproduction on more than six occasions in my academic medical career. I am familiar with the science and the epidemiological results of diagnosis and treatment. Human life, when two haploid cells come together, is a diploid cell, and we call that conception. We are here today to determine how we, as a society, take this marvelous creation into the arena in consideration of Iowa code and human rights. May I go back in history to 1720? Anne Bonny and Mary Reid were pirates in the Caribbean. They were captured and sentenced to hang for piracy. In their own defense, they said to the judge, quote, "My lord, we plead our bellies," end quote. Both were quickened or pregnant, and they were sent to jail until they delivered their children, and those children were weaned. Then they were hanged for their crime. Back in 1720, without the advantage of modern science or Western society, knew better than to terminate an innocent life, no matter the circumstances. For mother and child, for father and humanity, all compassionate interventions available should be implemented. So let me leave you with this final statement. That little girl in her mother's womb, that's a baby. Thank you.
My name is Jane Robinette. I'm a resident of Urbankdale. I oppose HSB 255 because it places a higher value on the first cardiac activity of a fully dependent embryo over the actual heartbeat of an independent person. You may point to the medical emergency and other exceptions, but those rarely work in real life. The medical emergency exception allows an abortion if physical conditions endanger the person's life or when pregnancy creates a serious risk of substantial and irreversible impairment of a major bodily function. But Iowa doctors will have to guess which situations qualify. Under similar vague language, uncertain doctors around the country have delayed acting in some cases until the person's life is in critical, imminent danger. OB-GYN doctors, already scarce in Iowa, are choosing to leave states because of laws like this. Specifically excluded are psychological and emotional conditions, family situation, and age. So suicidal ideation, emotional disorder, empty nester of five children, doesn't matter. Only 10 years old? Sorry. Absent a dire emergency, the state will force you to carry the pregnancy to birth, no matter the risks to your well-being. Other exceptions require that rape and incest be reported to the police or doctor within certain time periods in order to qualify. Shame, stigma, threats. People don't report rape and incest for many reasons. It has no bearing on the need for abortion care. Finally, like previous laws, this law will not stop abortions. It will only determine how safe abortions are for those who don't have the means to travel. This bill endangers lives. Please vote no.
Okay, that is our last speaker and does conclude our public hearing. Thank you for all for being respectful, and we will continue. And I will turn everything back over to our chair.
Thank you, everyone. Our committee will reconvene in two minutes, as soon as we move.
All right, we're going to begin the public hearing on community service appropriations, which is required by federal law. And so we do have a couple of speakers, but first I want to kind of run through the procedures. Well, first, I should introduce ourselves. So I'd have Representative Ronna Markwart. Would you introduce yourself?
Thank you. Representative Ronna Markwart.
I'm Representative Gary Moore, Chairman of the House Appropriations Committee.
Representative Van Meijer.
Representative Norlin Malmson.
All right, that's all of the representatives that are present here today. We do have a couple of speakers that signed up to speak. So you'll be given two minutes in which to speak. We'll have a timer down here. I'll hold up the yellow card, which is 15 seconds left. The red card will be to stop. And so that's by House rules. So we have to abide by that. And so I will ask you to stop at that point. So if there's any...